Going to go ahead and call us to order, and I'll call it order the Board of Supervisors Regular Meeting for Tuesday, March 5th, 2024, and if we could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and we will go to the manager for announcements and a roll call.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to members of the board, staff, and the public for joining us this evening on, for this March, March 5th Board of Supervisors Regular Meeting. This meeting has been properly advertised in accordance with the Pennsylvania Sunshine Act as a hybrid meeting with the option to attend virtually and in person here in the main meeting room. If you are in attendance with the option to attend virtually and in person, or excuse me, if you are in attendance virtually using the WebEx platform and wish to speak on an agenda item, please say your name, municipality of residence when the chairwoman calls on you. If you are attending in person with us in the main meeting room and wish to speak on behalf of an agenda item, please address the board at the podium and state your name, municipality of residence, and the topic you wish to speak on. Prior to commencing the meeting, I have just a few short procedural items to cover. First, members of the public attending using the WebEx platform are asked to remain muted during the meeting to prevent any ambient noise from disrupting the meeting. If a member of the public is acknowledged by the chair, they may unmute their microphone for their question or comment. Secondly, the board members are asked to indicate their name when motioning or seconding a motion so that the minutes may accurately reflect the action taken. And finally, a rule call vote of the Board of Supervisors will now be taken to ensure that all members can hear and interact using the WebEx meeting platform. Please indicate that you are here when your name is called. Ms. Strickland?
Here.
Ms. Stevens?
I'm here.
Mr. Thompson?
Here.
Mr. Patterson?
Here.
Mr. Heller?
Here.
Thank you. Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
All right, thank you. So we don't have any proclamations tonight, so we'll move to public input, and this is a time for anyone with any comments on an item not on tonight's agenda to make those. And I'm not seeing any in the room or online, so we'll go ahead and move forward to approval of the minutes, and this is the minutes from the February 20th Regular Meeting. So were there any changes to those? And if not, I'll have a, I'll take a motion to accept.
This is Patty, motion to approve the minutes.
This is Mar, say it.
Okay, all this in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say no. All right, thank you. And moving on, we have a report under Authorities, Boards, and Commissions, the State College Borough Water Authority with Ford Stryker. And we'll go to Ford.
Yeah, good evening, everyone. I assume you got my written report earlier. There's not a whole lot going on at the Water Authority, but it did increase the rate by 5% back in December for this year. You know, and there's some other minor items, but I'd be happy to address any questions if anybody has them on my written report, or if there's any information you'd like me to convey to the Authority, I'd be happy to do that.
All right, thank you. Were there any questions? And Patty, did you have a question?
Um, I, I did. So, thank you. Thanks for your report, Ford, and my questions had to do with the Walnut Grove area out there, and that there was not going to be a feasibility study in Danner Township to maybe connect with the Water Authority, and I was just curious about that process because there's so much development going on, like, is it, is doing a feasibility study now a good idea? I mean, every time I go to the airport, it seems like there's more and more being developed out there, and I don't even know if that's want to grow, but I was just curious about the, and I understand about the PFAS from the airport and that sort of thing, and I'm all in favor of it, but it just, I don't know if it's premature or not, and that was my only comment there. And then my second one is a question that, it seemed to me recently that Alaa Quipa Water Authority was in the news, like, for being hacked and things like that, and I just sort of had a question about the security, the, that sort of thing, so that we don't end up like Alaa Quipa.
Okay, maybe I can try to address the two, your two comments. So just for reference, the Walnut Grove development is, I'll call it on the other side of the airport or the other side of the runway from where a lot of the development is, you know, where the air terminal is, it's on the far side, so it's on the side toward Spring Creek. It's, it's a development that's been there for quite a long time, and it's, it's not really expanding. This is more an issue to try to provide water to the houses that are there, you know, again, because of concerns about potential contamination from PFAS. So it's, it's just a feasibility study, it's to see how practical it is, and of course, maybe most importantly, to figure out the cost. And then, you know, once that's done, and they understand the engineering issues and the financial issues, they're gonna have to figure out how to pay for it, and, you know, this may or may not be, you know, I don't think the Borough Water Authority would, would take it on, but they would look for, you know, some other funding sources. One of the things that was mentioned in the meeting that, you know, if they could determine where the PFAS came from, perhaps that entity, you know, might have to pay, but, you know, I think that's down the road once the study's done.
Okay, thank you.
The second part is, I did hear about the hacking of that Water Authority. I don't know enough about the Authority's security protocols to really respond to that, but I'll, I'll patch your question onto Brian Heiser, and maybe he can, he can address it, and I'll, you know, I'll provide feedback once I hear from him.
Awesome, thank you so much.
Other questions for Ford? Yes.
If I may, I think related to that hack that happened at Alaa Quipa was due to nobody resetting the factory password in the software they were using. So as long as we've reset the password, I think we're gonna be all right, even if we are using the same protocols and software, but I think that's how that one fleshed out.
Great, thanks, Matt.
All right, if there's no other questions, thanks so much, Ford, appreciate you serving on that board and your report.
Okay, great. If I could just take a second and say that I just want to thank the board for earlier in the year, or maybe late last year, approving the spring for the spongy wasps. I talked to the arper today, and I understand that we're soon gonna learn more details about that, but I happen to live in Greenbrier Development, and I guess the egg mass count here was extremely high, so I'm sure that, well, I know that I am very appreciative, and I suspect my neighbors will be too, so thank you.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, we'll move to Special Reports and Acknowledgements. This month is Women's History Month, Greek American Heritage Month, Irish American Heritage Month, and Agriculture Month. And Employee Appreciation Day was on Friday, March 1st, International Women's Day is Friday, March 8th, and Ramadan begins Sunday, March 10th. We'll move to Township and Fiscal Responsibility, and we have a presentation on Emergency Management Services from Jonathan Rysley.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me here. My name is Jonathan Rysley, I'm the newly appointed Emergency Management Coordinator for the Center Region, so in a public safety meeting or emergency management meeting was talked about, hey, we have some new officials, I'm gonna come out, we're gonna talk about what I'm gonna, what services I provide to you, and I'll answer any questions you may have, so won't take up too much of your time here this evening, but we'll go ahead to the next slide here. So for those of you online, if you wanna scan your computer, that'll pull up the QR code with all the documents and links that I'm gonna talk about here, I'm not gonna dive super deep into them this evening, because we'd be here for a couple hours, but if you have questions, please let me know, I'll be more than happy to answer those. But we're gonna go over what is emergency management, the rules, the regulations, and all those details on why I'm here and what I do for you. We're gonna talk about the relationship with, that the Center Region has and the municipalities have with the university, the services my department specifically will provide to you and your citizens in the event we actually have something pop up, talk about some requirements of myself, as well as the elected officials here in this room, as well as the other municipalities in the area, so we all unfortunately have a little bit of homework to do. And then wrap it up with some comments and things that aren't in the slides here, so, next slide, please. So what is emergency management? There's a bunch of words on the slide here, but basically this comes down to, we're an insurance policy. We are here to help when bad things happen. And unfortunately, we live in a day and age where more bad things seem to be making the news more often than we really like, so part of what my office does is works with the various agencies, more than just fire police and EMS, we work with them, but a little bit further than that, we're working with the school districts, public works on what happens when bad stuff happens. Blizzards, water line breaks, electrical outages, we talked about the Water One Water Company getting hacked. No, I'm not the IT expert, I know how to reset a password, but you don't want me diving through, you know, trying to, you know, hack anything and play white hacker, so that's that bad stuff. So we're doing a lot of that coordination to assist in getting over that hump of, this is the really bad thing, how do we get back to the normal way of life that we're used to living? And that's what we're here for. Next slide. So there are rules and laws and regulations all the way from the federal level down to the lowest levels. We're a Commonwealth, so all that authority gets pushed down to the lowest level, having the authority having jurisdiction, which is everyone sitting in the room here this evening. So there is a Pennsylvania code on it, you can click on that hyperlink there, it'll take you to Title 35, which lives emergency management and a few other things, but specifically, this is, I'm telling you, you need to have somebody here, but fortunately, the Center Region decided to pull their resources together, which is awesome, because why, it saves must money, because now each individual municipality doesn't need to have that own little widget that is used in that, so we can share resources, which is one thing that I really liked about when I took this opportunity here, it's, wow, we're working, yeah, this makes sense and saves cents. So as I mentioned, lots of resources, if you click on each of these, you'll pull up their respective hyperlink online, download the PDF, I'm giving this presentation to the borough, or I'm going to be giving it to everyone in the Center Region at some point, so that's why you'll see the different stuff up here. But I can tell you from reading all of these, the language in them is very, very, very similar. It is slightly different, but you need to have emergency management, and we are here to help. And there are also in here is fire and EMS, so some things, light reading, they're not terrible, it's not 600 pages, I believe, the first two are probably around 40 to 50 pages, and then the last one's a little bit thicker, but still not a hard read, and it's better, it's not written in the Title 35 law language, it's spelled out very nice to read, so it's digestible at that point. But again, I'd highly encourage you to review that, and if you have questions, I'll be more than happy to, you know, sit and talk to any one person one-on-one about that. So the relationship that the Center Region has with the university, it's a very tight working relationship. When I worked at the university, I worked with some of the individuals in their emergency management shop on my job that I had then at that point in time, so I've known a lot of them for, probably since 2012, when I first started working at the university in another life, so we work together. What does that bring? So we have the six municipalities, which bring a lot of resources, that's a whole other world of resources we have available to us. Equipment, staff, facilities, one thing I'll throw out there now, and I've offered it to everyone as I'm giving this presentation, I wanted to try and get a list of people that may want to tour, the two emergency operation centers we have there, we have access to them, so if we did need to declare an emergency and open up an EOC, we have those available to us. So ideally, I'd like to get some people in there and see it before we actually need it, some rainy day, so, but we'll make that available to you once I get a nice pool of people, and then we'll start going through those facilities, and, because there are facilities, we share them with the university. If the university needs something, they can also ask us, hey, we're going, we're overwhelmed, can you help us out? Absolutely, we're here to help. Again, it's that community effort that I really like about this area, because it's, yes, we're all different, but at the end of the day, we're all gonna work together to mitigate that emergency. The plan was established, we're working on reviewing that plan and updating it, the last time- The last time it was updated was before COVID. We've learned a lot of lessons since COVID that we never really thought was possible until COVID hit. So we're going to update that here later this year and then publish that, working with the university. So where I fit in this giant organization of, that is the Center Region Council of Governments and all of the municipalities here, I function underneath the Emergency Management Council, which each municipality has representation on that council to, you know, help drive this program. It is your program, it is not just mine, but I administer it day-to-day, but ultimately, it's up to each municipality to help drive this program to make it better. So you'll see me over there on the left-hand side in the orange. So my department, it consists of two people, myself and I do have a part-time deputy. We, as I said, we work with the university and the other municipalities here in the region. We provide services, you know, that are listed on here. We're almost that, what do we do if? I love those kind of questions because it gets us thinking because that's what I like to do. But ties right in with the special events here. So if we didn't have the university on the other side of town there, we probably wouldn't be as big as we are right now. With that comes a significant threat, though. We're the third largest city in the state, you know, eight times a year, maybe nine. So all kinds of hazards come with that. So there's always planning in place. So we're reaching out to other local authorities, all the way up to federal authorities. We have some of these events. You may not know it, but that's how that works. And it works because you don't know it's there. But it ultimately is keeping all of us safe. So we have that interaction. We have Ironman, which I don't know if anyone was aware of that last year. That was a nice win for the area, lots of tourism and all kinds of people. I've played with that, a volunteer capacity with my fire department there. And I know we're working on that again here to make that again successful. Everyone, they updated the hilly part, but on the mountain, but that was the only critique I heard from the participants. So, but again, lots of events coming here to Happy Valley, too. That's why people want to come and work and live here. So we want to make it a safe place. Situation awareness, that's the weather alerts, that's some of the up-to-date trends or, hey, there, did you know about this? And so we're working with those people and it, you may not hear about it, but we're having those conversations with people involved. Again, I don't want to talk about COVID too much, but hey, what's going on? What's the hospital capacity like? And I'm actually super excited, we have another hospital opening up here later this summer, so more service is available to us in this area. So you have another choice in the event of just where do I need to go? Disaster response, again, we'll work with each of the municipalities to talk about declaring that disaster in the event we have one. I do have access to a pot of money in the event we need to start spending that in order to mitigate some of the hazard, call in additional resources if it's something that exceeds what we have here in any of the municipalities and the university. But I do have that pool of money that's available to me and us in the event we need to do that. The last thing is, well, two things, the individual assistance. So when we do declare that, we, my office will help your citizens actually file those paperwork, that to get reimbursed in the event we do have a declaration. So we need consistency when reporting that because if we declare an emergency, then the county declares one. In the state, there's funds available to us and those citizens to help recoup some of the losses that we've had. But it needs to be documented appropriately or else we're out that money. So our office will assist with that. And then public education like this, as well as we've also done another presentation to another business group here that reached out to our office, hey, what is emergency management? What is continuity of operations? How do we continue operating when bad stuff happens and mitigate the losses upfront versus, you know, afterwards? So we do those services as well. Next, please. So I alluded to some homework here. Everything I, on the left-hand side, the top two, they're required of all the elected officials to complete. The good news is they're online education, it'll take you a couple hours to go through. If we don't have those on hand, we may or may not get reimbursed for services because that's required training of you. In the link in the QR code, I do have the hyperlinks for that available to you. And if you're not sure if you've completed that previously or not, please let me know and I can, more than happy to assist you with that. If you want to dive down and do a little bit more training, there's some additional courses on there as well. The 200 and 800, they're online, the 3 and 400, they're in person. There are several day classes, the good news is I've taken them as well as some others in the office. So if you want, I can point you in that direction. For myself, I have to take all the courses that you're required to take in addition to some others. I'm currently working on my state certification at the associate level. I need one more in-service training, I can submit for that. And then I need one additional training for my professional level, as well as serving in the associate level for a year, and then I can submit for my professional. So I'm well on my way to completing that and I'm hoping to have that wrapped up by next year. And then also, there's some additional training at the National Fire Academy, me in Emmitsburg, Maryland. So again, the QR code, that's where I threw all this documentation in here. Talked about the tours, I'd really like to, you know, take, you know, get some time with everyone, you know, walk through and talk to some people here. I know the university's working on a formal relationship right now with Center County for their dispatch center to become the backup center for Center County. So again, we're all working together for that bad day scenario that hopefully never comes. So with that, I'll turn it back over unless anyone has any questions for me.
Thank you so much. And questions? You can start here in the room.
No.
Whoever wants to begin.
No questions, just a comment and first off to say congratulations on the appointment to the position. So I know there's a lot going on right now and a lot of coordination that has to happen, as you said, between the university and multiple, you know, groups that we have in emergency management. I feel one would love an EOC tour, I'm just going to put that out there. And further discussion around security threats and assessments, so. Cool, thank you.
Thanks, Jared.
I, you know, great presentation, I had no questions. I would, as a little bit of a snippet, I, I am actually certified by the National Weather Service as a Skywarn Spotted. I do believe a lot of emergency personnel do go through their trainings that they hold usually in the spring and the fall. And there is some coming up, I saw for later this spring, if anyone wants to check those out through the National Weather Service website. Free and even open to the public to attend. Get a nice little overview of different types of weather and what to report. Nice thing is it kind of creates a little bit of a network for the National Weather Service to help them when they're issuing watches, warnings, and advisories that sometimes the technology doesn't necessarily tip them off.
Well, and even then, the Skywarn system will actually help provide better and accurate information to the public because they will include that, it's more than just, hey, this is the prediction. So if you have a network of people reaching out with the conditions prior to the storm hits, that's going to actually change versus just what does the radar say? And hey, they completely missed it. So the more people you have reporting, it's more accurate overall.
And, and that does seem to be the case when you have a weather warning that goes out and says, hey, this was observed versus, well, the radar thinks there might be a tornado. There's a little bit of different response that thankfully gets people to be more serious.
That's interesting, thank you. And Patty?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. And I just wanted to say if there is any sort of tours or anything, I would gladly go on it. So add me to your list. And a question about Code Red, how is that working for the region?
So right now, I met with Center, so Code Red is a notification system that's available to the public. So anyone can sign up to it and receive a Code Red message. Right now, the Center County is working on updating their program as well on what activities or events would trigger a Code Red warning. So I want to say at least right now, think of it almost as an Amber Alert, but we could use it for anything potentially. So if there was an active shooter event, we could actually target a select area where that event was taking place and notify everyone in that impacted area. We can literally draw on a map and say, within this area, notify these people that are registered. But you have to be registered in order to receive it. It's not like an Amber Alert where it just goes out and hits everyone broadly. So you can go on Center County's website and register for Code Red. We're working on cleaning it up. I was in some training here earlier this week and developing some additional groups for my own purposes to notify some fire and EMS individuals versus just the general public. That's going to be Center County, but we're working on revamping that as well. So there will be more to follow on that. But if you have other questions, I'd be more than glad to sit down with you and jump into the system with you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks. And my first note was going to be, I suspect a lot of people on the board or in staff will want a tour. So, and I heard that. So yeah, if we could just follow up on that, I think that'd be really interesting.
Nope, I just wanted to make sure I get a quorum of people. I'm not against doing onesie-twosies, but it's a nice balance between, because the one area is where the university's police dispatch is from. So there will be active work taking place. So a manageable group I'm okay with, the one in the stadium is open most of the time, so that one's easy. But I'd like to knock out the university stuff all in one day potentially. And then 911 will take a little bit more of a coordination because that's 24/7/365 of. But once I get a list of interested parties, I can start working with norm with the county to figure out dates and times that'll work for everyone.
Thanks. And I guess my, my other comment or not even so much a question, but it goes along with Patty's Code Red question. And you had referred a little bit to public education. So I think I'd be interested in knowing what other, like what avenues you look at at your agency for public education. If there's a way that, you know, you try to push out materials or other information, you know, how can we be of help with that? I think, I think a lot of us, especially through COG, you know, and maybe, you know, with the constant contact, you know, they have those different lists. If there's a, an opt-in through one of those things, I think that might be helpful. But to push out your public education in that way, too.
Well, and the one thing I'm looking at is using social media, of course, but not everyone has that. But we're, I don't want to say too much right now because I don't want to surprise anyone because I haven't reached out to them quite yet. But we're working on some other people that might help us champion those efforts that reach out to a larger audience in the area. So that's in the works right now, but I haven't pulled that trigger on that yet to say, hey, let's sit down and talk about this. So I don't want to let that cat out of the bag quite yet. But we're working on that with Sean and probably here later this month to start having those meetings because of some other changes that have taken place within COG. So what's that best way to get that message out?
That's great. And I think some of the, probably some of the information that had been shared through the schools, I think a lot of that dropped off during COVID. And I think that would be great to kind of ramp that up through your office, through Sean's at Alpha. I think, I think this will all be very helpful. I know you're new and, you know, I think this is a great opportunity to try to, to kind of revive some of those things. I have, I think others here have had experience with the Red Cross and I was with them for a while in disaster services. And what PMA and FEMA, all those agencies always told us is you have to be prepared in your household for the first one, two, three days. And so I think getting that message across just can't be overstated. So looking forward to see what, what advances out of there. Well, thanks so much for the presentation. If there's no other questions, yeah, so we will look forward to a tour at some point.
I will be in touch.
Great, thanks so much. Okay, and we have no environment reports, so we will move to COG and regional committee reports. Up first is the Public Safety Committee. And that was Omari.
Omari.
Yes.
Hi. Good evening. Not, not a ton more than what's in the agenda there. Probably one thing I'll just add is that I'm continuing to press on and kind of utilizing the COG for what it is. And that is kind of consolidating, bringing, bringing services together. So there's some really awesome services from public safety that I can potentially do more of this.
All right, questions on public safety? Now, I think my only comment, and I guess this is between public safety and HR, is the, the fire, you fire position job descriptions. I saw that come through and I guess HR maybe was canceled and so I was.
For next.
Okay, so I was just wondering.
It would have been this week.
Okay, right, that's right. So I was wondering if either of you knew where that was at. We had heard a report from Sean Kaufman at General Forum and he was saying how volunteerism was really good this year, all the numbers of volunteers were looking good. And so I was wondering if, if that was still on track for hiring, I guess, second quarter? Or if there was some talk about delaying that a bit? But you, neither of you might know that at this point, but that'd be a follow-up question.
It made up, I would say, the, maybe we kind of looked at it as that we were good with it. So from the next, there was HR finance.
Okay, so that'll be coming to HR next. So I guess that would be, one question I would pose is, does that still need to move forward in, in Q2? Or can we look at, at putting that off? Because when that schedule was established, too, we didn't know the executive director was leaving. And so I would just think it might make sense to push that until after the new executive director. But that's, you know, kind of aside from the need. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't state that that's a, you know, something I would necessarily fully support if there is a need there, but curious if there'd been those discussions. So I guess I'll put that to both the HR and the finance person for your next meetings.
Yep.
Yeah, and I.
I will run back in the next public safety, you're welcome.
Thanks, I appreciate that.
I, and I can forward a memo that we had got from HR regarding that it is in the memo. It looks like there is a little bit of a setback there with, between like legal review and just taking another look at that. So I guess April 1st had been a target, but it does say at this time, the positions are not on track to be hired by April 1st, so.
Okay. Thank you all very much for that. And we'll go to Park and Recreation Governance Committee with Patty.
All right, thank you. We had a good discussion and basically just reviewed the matrix again, the responsibilities that were outlined in the matrix. And we, we got to the part which is, I think, the hardest thing that we're really trying to hammer out. And that is the roles of the elected officials and the roles of the authority and, and how that all happens. So I had put forward the idea that Ferguson Township was supportive of, of some sort of COG committee that had electeds, in our committee, made up of electeds, that we had some sort of oversight of parks. And I'm not sure how well that was received, but basically the question that was put back to me is, so if there's no sort of Parks Committee, does that mean that Ferguson, like Ferguson's not in on this? And I said, you know, I, I, I think so. Because I think we'd really like to have some sort of elected oversight because our feeling is that the authority is, is made up of not elected folks. And, and then our Parks Committee for the Township is again, they are community volunteers and do a great job, but again, not elected folks. And so we just wanted to have somebody that has that more holistic funding overview still working for parks. So I guess what I'm saying is that I will meet with you individually to sort of get your read on how you feel about that. And we can have discussions individually. But it's, it's just trying to slug through this and figure out. I, I will say that in there, they did, the Parks Authority representatives were, their, their statements were, well, we've got to keep moving forward because we've still got to keep growing and building. And, and that sort of to me highlighted the things that had me concerned is that yes, that's great, but it has to be growing and building, but with boundaries, you know, financial boundaries that, you know, anyway. So that was just our meeting. So I will reach out to you all individually.
Thank you, Patty. Questions on Parks Governance? Not seen it. Thank you, Patty, thanks for the report. And yeah, I guess that makes the most sense, you know, for whatever feedback you need between now and, and the next meeting. But it doesn't sound like they're coming to a close on that anytime soon, so.
No.
All right, thank you. And we'll go back to Omari for the Facilities Committee.
The, for the meeting again, some facilities committee, I mean, today, this was, you know, this morning. So fresh off the presses there, we had essentially. So fresh off the presses there, we had essentially the main manager and I were getting to consensus and understanding of kind of what the facilities committee was going to, from a policy perspective, prioritize for for input to the finance committee. And, you know, this is kind of a change from the past where staff would kind of put the needs across facilities, whether it's a cog building or EMS or fire or or, you know, any of the other kind of committee level things or staff level priorities. And then they, you know, then there would be some slashes at the end, and so they wanted to get kind of a facilities committee. And being newer to the committee, it was actually a change because, you know, some folks on the committee said, hey, we normally focused on the building, and now we're being asked on a much larger scale to include the library and such. So so we are morphing, it sounds like, and bottom line of that, some of the main priorities were, one, to kind of look at anything that was that was deferred to understand the needs to kind of have to be on that that priority list for budgeting, to look at things that are kind of in good shape and can, or is there going to be any to carry forward and not use that budget for twenty twenty-four that made it. Another priority was to kind of centralize resources, I mean, both of both, whether it's for bulk purchasing or kind of further partnership and collaboration, collaborations, utilizing jobs in these values that have kind of relationships and or services already in place. But that led to, you know, number one, we're going to just, number one, keep at or below current funding levels from a capital perspective, and then, two, obviously, public, anything's public safety, whether it's EMS or fire or risk management, you know, like any of those type of things, those are going to be priority one. There's going to be a broader kind of look at our network security and making sure we don't get hacked, as Patty mentioned earlier in the meeting today. And then there's some other things that can kind of linger and simmer at the bottom of the priority list that are self-efficient, like the code office. So very spirited conversation today, but parks did come up, which one I didn't say we need to fix that, that situation. So Patty, I'm talking through those types of things in other places. So I'll go through to you.
All right, questions on facilities? Well, thanks, Omari, that's really interesting, that discussion, because it sounded like the request out of finance was essentially going to give facilities kind of a a reason to kickstart the the CIP and budget request. So that's, that's interesting. So we'll see how that, what the results are that come back and how finance uses that. So that's an interesting exercise. Okay, all right, if there's no other, yeah. Good, thank you. And then we have CCMPO. We met last week, not a lot to add to what was in the agenda. There were some other materials, and everything that they come out with is always available on the on the page on COG as well. The only couple of things I was going to highlight were, we had a report on the State College Area Connector, and the one development I was going to highlight was that the Route forty-five connector was removed. That had been an option that was being considered, and that was removed. That'll actually be going under a separate study alongside the State College Area Connector project, but separate. And we formed a number of subcommittees as well. One on the Active Transportation Plan that's moving forward, one on the Safety Projects, one on an electric vehicle, it says readiness subcommittee, but it was an infrastructure plan. And so that was, that was a brand-new item, and then the Long Range Transportation Plan. I'm going to be serving on that, as is Ron Seibert, so we will both be on Long Range Transportation Plan. And I'm looking forward to that, that'll be some really interesting discussions on there. Questions on CCMPO? Oh, and I was going to mention, too, that there is a training, an MPO one oh one coming up this month, and I think I sent everybody the date, so if you want to sign up for that, that is available to you.
Was there any more rumblings at the meeting about passenger rail?
No, not at this one, but actually, I, in the Long Range Transportation Plan, that's where we would probably see funding or or a listing for some kind of study or something to move forward with that. So but I did, I did think about that when we were talking about that committee, so. But that would, I mean, if you go to the to the training, if you're able to go to that, that would be a great question to ask there. Like, where should we raise this? Because there are others who are interested in that, so.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, so if you don't have that link for signing up, let me know, and I can get that back out to you. And I think that was it for committee reports. We'll go to staff reports, and we have managers' report, if there's anything you wanted to add from that. Thank you, I'm happy to answer any questions. My report is provided within the agenda packet. Questions for the manager? Oh, Patty?
Yeah, hi, sorry. Since Teresa, in your report, you had said that Penn State was going to be working on a low-mo grow zone in the township. Do you know, did they happen to mention where that was?
I recall from the conversation that there were two designated locations that were being considered, and I believe we'll get final details as we approach, as we get closer to spring.
Oh, okay. And then the watershed cleanup letter that you had put in there, it had said that if there was any recommended spaces in the township, and I was just going to see if we could recommend Viro Boulevard on the suburban park side of Viro Boulevard. There's just a lot of debris there.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Pass that along. Thanks, Patty. Not seen any other questions. We will go to the Public Works Director, if there is anything you wanted to add or highlight.
I, excuse me, like to highlight one item, that we do have a planned road closure on Princeton Drive, and that is to allow UAJ to relocate a sewer main and replace a thirteen-foot-deep manhole in conjunction with work that they need to do to relocate their facility out of the drainage way from, the Park Hills Drainage Way from Princeton to Devonshire. So it's been, it's been in the planning stages, and appropriate notifications have been made. It will start tomorrow morning. It will be, the plan is to be open tomorrow night, closed the second day, and then open. So it's a very short section, Princeton's accessible from both ends. We have sent out notifications, and there's variable message signs up also. So in the event you have any inquiries, I can field field those questions.
Okay, thank you. Questions for Mr. Modricar? Not seeing any. All right. Thanks very much. We will move to new business. Up first is the Consent Agenda. Did anyone need to remove anything to discuss on there? And if not, I will take a motion to approve the Consent Agenda.
This is Matt, I'll make a motion to approve the Consent Agenda.
Is there a second?
Ma'am, so sorry. The, um, I guess I just want to have a little bit of discussion on engagement for the interim planning director as well as the CNET closed captioning.
Items D and E, you want to pull?
Yes.
Okay. So would you care to modify your motion to approve items A, B, and C?
You mentioned E.
Isn't that correct?
I'm sorry.
To remove D and E?
I'm sorry, D and E are?
That was the engagement for the interim planning and zoning, and then closed captioning for CNET.
Okay, why am I missing E? I'm sorry, was that on?
It might be an older version.
Hmm, okay, this is just pulled out. Interesting, okay.
Oh.
Yeah, that's.
It is missing E.
It is missing E on mine. Huh.
Oh, okay, I have it.
And that was just access before the meeting.
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah.
I have it, so. Okay, so if you'd care to modify your motion?
Sure, make a motion that we approve the Consent Agendas, items A, B, and C.
Hi, Mr. Thompson, we'll second that motion.
All right, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Okay, thank you. We'll move to item D to discuss, and that was approval of engagement for interim planning and zoning services. Omari?
Hey, thanks so much, I just read that. I did read it and thought it was a great idea. I'm just curious about kind of the plan and kind of the timelines for, as there was some lines there in the agreements. I don't know if it's a kind of, we're thinking about.
So the the agreement is provided as a, just as a as a reference as to what we would consider further services. A sit-down meeting will be held with the principal lead, his name is Mr. Jonathan Tront, and we will further discuss based on the needs of the Planning and Zoning Department. And then the timeline is is really based on, as soon as we can fill it, the the number of applicants. We've had a low number of applications that we've received, and so providing some interim resources for our Planning and Zoning Department is is what's being prioritized at this time. So I don't have a timeline, unfortunately, as soon, until we have a new Planning and Zoning Director.
And any budgetary impact of this?
Uh, there was a, we did a evaluation to see what we could budget, and we've provided a cap on services that the township would receive based on the wages and compensation package we would be paying for our former Planning and Zoning Director. Does that make sense?
It does, and then my final question is, so this is, with this company, the plan is to maybe have them provide a couple of individuals to help in in kind of key areas, versus just one, or any thoughts there?
Yeah, well, so really, based on need, based on the agreement, they do provide a breakdown of what their hourly services are, and really, it shows kind of the deep bench of resources that they have available, so they, I think, listed there. I don't have the agreement in front of me, but if there were, say, for example, an ordinance enforcement issue that we wanted to delegate to this firm, then of course, they have that expertise on staff. I think they have listed a principal lead, they have reference to senior planner, a GIS expert, which, of course, we would need GIS services because we have a GIS coordinator. But they do provide a list of the options that are available, and then based on a sit-down that we would have, based on the holistic needs that our Planning and Zoning Department currently has, we would select based on what what our needs were.
And those are all included in here? We can see there is.
It's all included, right. It's just that we would only select what we would need.
Right.
And that sometimes might be different month to month, if that makes sense.
Yes, absolutely. Any other questions on that?
Yeah, so then the the approval is to, it's approval of engagement. It's just kind of giving you the kind of authorization to find the timeline and bring in who you need to get this work done?
Yes.
Okay. Awesome, thank you, really appreciate that. I think it's a great move, you know, given that there's, there's a lot of work to do and, and need to get the right folks in. The resume was very impressive in the back there, thank you.
And we can move right to item E, I believe, and then we can approve both together. So we'll go to approval of participation in CNET Closed Captioning Services Program. Omari?
This could have been something you guys discussed before, but was this a kind of a budgetary impact thing? Or was this just simply authorization to engage CNET? How, what was the reason for this coming to the board?
Great question. This was in front of the board, I think, earlier this year, based on a neighboring municipality that received some, what I would identify as kind of some scrutiny for not having ADA accessible options for the public. And after talking recently with the CNET Executive Director and understanding specifically, you know, how this service is easily provided through CNET, and I, it's my understanding that we may actually be one of the the last municipalities in the center region to opt into this. We've only, you know, we will only be opting into the service that CNET will provide to provide closed captioning on the CNET webpage where they provide the video recording. And then the township is exploring other options that would allow for ADA accessible options in real time. But the agreement, yes, is just to to bring it back to the board for approval. There is a slight budgetary impact that I believe will be charged on an annual basis, but we are able to to address that and execute the agreement.
And we don't have anybody in the township that has specifically requested in darkness?
Not.
Or reverse that.
Well.
Yeah, how's anybody requesting?
Not directly. Look, we haven't had a resident who said we should do this, but it's been encouraged by members here in the region to avoid having any action taken by the state for not being in compliance. Does that make sense? So we haven't had a resident make this request, but we have been encouraged by other governing agencies to consider this. To consider ADA accessible options.
What's our solicitor's all?
She provided, I believe she was here at the last board discussion. I I can't recall what, I did, we didn't ask her for a legal opinion on this, but she recommended it as as something that we should, recommended ADA accessible options be provided, and this is a way to do that.
And does current solution is like a seventy-five percent solution, or is it just so bad that we need to kind of tell me, et cetera, of work brands?
I'm sorry, could you repeat the question? I'm not sure I understood it.
The, so the, there is closed captioning made to YouTube or whatever kind of current services exist. Is that accurate?
So there's, yeah, there are services that are provided through YouTube, yes. But for the clickable op, like for the option that's on CNET's webpage, the video recording, to have that be closed caption is the service that we are, that we would be opting in for.
Okay. I, I just think this one probably, if there, if this is a, or must approve it, I would just recommend that we take a little more time on this one. I know it's not a lot of money, but it's setting a precedence that I think we want to, it may be the precedence, but I think we want to make sure we kind of have all the facts, and I'm not sure, I, I don't have everything that I need to support this community at this mere moment, over.
So did you have anything else to add?
Yeah, I mean, I would, I would encourage the board to give some consideration to approving this, and then if, you know, we can continue, and we'll have already discussed other, exploring other options. But just to ensure that when we're posting our video footage on CNET's webpage, that our, you know, viewers have the option to access the closed captioning, which is what this agreement would be providing. So I would recommend that the board proceed, and, you know, the other options that we're considering as part of our new audio and visual system is just for those that may be in the in the room this evening, for example, would be able to see the closed captioning, right? And we have that available through our new system, we we just need to. And we have that available through our new system. We, we just need to get it up and running. So I, I would consider, I would encourage the board to take action this evening. And then, of course, if we need to follow up and we can continue to explore other options.
Thank you. And just to refer back to the previous agenda item we had on this, the question really was, does this go far enough as to what we feel we may be required to provide? And again, this is likely still just a step. And the, you know, the cost is low. We've already agreed to this at cog. And so I think, you know, I'd be supportive of this at this point. So were there, were there any other comments I could have met?
I will say that I, I'm also supportive of this only because I've seen institutionally in other corporate entities within this region, impacted when somebody says, hold on, there's something that's going on here, ADA compliance, et cetera, that has really opened up Pandora's box. Which has taught me the lesson of we have to lean into this as far as we can to avoid impacting folks that need the service and then opening ourselves up to litigation and everything else that comes with that. So because I have seen that in other entities locally, public and private, that I would encourage us to go ahead and keep leaning into this and items like this in the future. That's it.
Thanks.
Yeah, I'm definitely supportive of this. As a matter of fact, I did hear a story of someone that was accessing our meetings on WebEx, which now does have a closed captioning service and it was very helpful for them. They said that they had a disability that it helps to be able to see that closed captioning. So, and, and it's just good at making government accessible to the residents we serve, so.
All right, if there's no other discussion on this, we'll go ahead and take these two separately. So if we can have a motion on, oh, Patty, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, well, I didn't have anything to add really, other than sort of echoing what Jeremy and Matt had said. It's that I, my feeling is, is that any cost of potential lawsuits is, is, is going to be more than the couple thousand dollars that we're going to pay. And then I personally have some sort of senior neighbors who actually watch things with the captioning on because their hearing is bad. So I absolutely support this.
Thank you. Okay, so let's take these two items separately. So if there's a motion for approval of engagement for the interim planning and zoning services.
This is Omari.
This is Omari, so moved.
Patty, I'll second.
Thanks. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, say no. Okay, and if someone would like to make a motion on approval of participation in CNET closed captioning services program.
This is Matt.
This is Patty, so moved.
And this is Matt, I'll second.
All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Point of order.
Yes.
Were we supposed to have some discussion on this?
We can, if there is, if there is additional discussion.
Yes, ma'am. So my, just my only thought here is that I, I'm not sure, I, I'm not, I'm supportive of closed captioning. I'm not supportive of the solution. I, I don't know that there's been another solution brought to the table to kind of take it through. So that, that's kind of, that's my thought there. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say no.
No.
Thank you. Okay, we will move to a public hearing on a resolution of the township of Ferguson Center County, Pennsylvania, authorizing the acquisition of an easement from St. Paul, St. Paul's Lutheran Church in Pine Grove Mills, PA. And we'll go to Mr. Modricker.
And for tonight is the resolution that the chair mentioned. Requesting and authorizing that the chair and the manager sign a permanent easement. St. Paul Lutheran Church has signed the easement. This easement would allow the township to access and maintain the ornamental streetlights along the frontage of Pine Grove Road in front of the church. Those streetlights were not part of the original streetscaping project and were not programmed for the LED conversions and put on the meters. So that may be something that we want to consider in the future. But tonight, in order to access these lights, the board's being asked to authorize the resolution.
Thank you.
Yes.
All right, okay, this is a public hearing, so I will open the public hearing for comments on this item. I'm not seeing any. So I will close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
This is Matt. I move that board supervisors adopt the resolution related, of course, to the easement for St. Paul's Lutheran Church in Pine Grove Mills for the streetlights.
Is there a second?
This is Patty, I'll second.
Thanks. Discussion? Questions on this?
I just want to say this is almost two years in the making, if not more, of St. Paul than others trying to figure out who owns the streetlights and calls to local service providers and everything else in township. So I, again, I appreciate everybody's support on this because I know it's been a long time coming to just figure it out, to get it to this point, to talk a little bit more about it with an easement. So just want to thank staff, everybody, you know, for having that conversation.
Anything? Not seeing anything online. And yeah, this just allows you access to, to keep them operable and, and, yeah, and future discussions are planned for any other actions. So this is just for the easement, so. Any other comments or questions? Not seeing any. And this is a roll call vote.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a roll call vote for 2024-09. Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Heller?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Ms. Strickland?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It passes unanimously.
Thank you. We will move to a public hearing on a resolution of the township of Ferguson Center County, Pennsylvania, authorizing the acquisition of an easement from S and A Homes and Col d'Utormalet in State College, PA. And we will go back to Mr. Modricker.
In conjunction with the construction of the traffic signal for the Science Park Road and Sandy Drive intersection, it was necessary to acquire two very small easements, 10 foot by 10 foot on the northwest corner and on the southwest corner with the names that the chair mentioned. So those property owners were amenable. They have signed the easements. And tonight, we're asking that the board adopt the resolution, authorizing the chair and manager to sign on behalf of the township.
Great, thank you. And this is a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing for comments on this item. Not seeing any. I'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
This is Patty. I move that the board of supervisors adopt the resolution to acquire the easement for the traffic signal at Science Park Road and Sandy Drive.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mr. Thompson will second that motion.
All right, any other discussion, questions on this item? Not seeing any. And this is a roll call vote.
Thank you. This is a roll call vote for 2024-10. Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Heller?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Ms. Strickland?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution passes unanimously.
Thank you. Okay, up next is an application for a proposed ordinance amendment, chapter 27, part 2, section 205-15, Light Industry Research and Development District. And we'll go to the manager.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On February 20th, 2024, the township received an application for a proposed zoning ordinance amendment to chapter 27, part 2, section 02, 205-15, Light Industry Research and Development District IRD. The proposed amendment is to add place of assembly to the allowable principal uses included. With the agenda packet is the application in the district quick view document listing the approved principal uses. Happy to share more if there are additional questions. The recommended motion is provided with the, within the agenda packet, which is to refer to the Planning Commission for further discussion and research for recommendation to the board of supervisors at a, at another meeting, at a future meeting.
Thanks so much. And thanks too for all the inclusions in the agenda. It's very helpful to have the map and the quick views. We could take some questions before a motion if, if needed, if there is any clarification on this process needed. Again, this is to refer the request back to the Planning Commission for, for their consideration. So we don't have to consider it tonight if, if we want to refer it. So I'm looking for any comments and, or questions prior to the motion. So I'm not seeing any, so if someone would care to make a motion.
Yeah, this is Matt. I'll make a motion that the board of supervisors refer the application for a proposed amendment to, of chapter 27, part 2, section 205 dot 15, allowing place of assembly as a principal use to the Planning Commission for a recommendation.
Is there a second?
Please, Omari, I'll second that.
Okay, any other discussion? Not seeing any. All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 And any opposed, say no. All right, thank you. We will move on to an informational presentation on the stormwater management program, level of service and cost of service with Mr. Modricker.
Thank you. So tonight, I'm going to share some information with the board, answer some questions and talk about how the level of service and cost of service were determined for the stormwater fee. And to do that, I'm going to start with just a little bit of the chronology. So here you can see kind of the timeline laid out from when the request for quotes for professional services was issued, through a phase one study, through a phase two study, through some public input processes until such time as the fee was adopted by the board. This is just a visual of that same timeframe. So phase one of the study, I'm not going to focus a lot on phase one because really the, the level of service and cost of service were mostly determined and discussed in phase two of the study. But phase one of the study basically indicated that the stormwater user fee was operationally and financially feasible. It did talk about a number of, number of other items, policies, credits, incentives. But, but once again, this is really here just as a matter of background. This slide is simply to let you know that through the process of phase one, in addition to having a consultant onboard, we did have a stormwater advisory committee. Some of those names changed between phase one and phase two. I think I have listed up there, phase two. But it covered a diverse stakeholder group. So within phase two of the study, there were some highlights that, that, that came out of that. And in particular, it looks like I'm focusing here on meeting nine. So that would be one of the later meetings of the advisory committee in phase two. Focus on assessment of all components of the drainage system, investing in system repair, rehabilitation. So there's a, there's a, an emphasis on determining what infrastructure we have, what condition it's in, and then starting to repair those in the most critical condition. The other elements that were important, complying with our MS4 permit. So you've heard me use that acronym a lot, our municipal separate storm sewer permit. And if part of that permit, there's six measurable goals, but there are also what we refer to as PRP, pollutant reduction plan projects that came out of that. We looked at a different level of service or service area, what I'll call rural and urbanized areas. There was a lot of discussion about that in this, in this phase of the study also. There was also discussion about how funding is provided for stormwater infrastructure repairs. And there was a, a desire to keep the expenses related with stormwater repairs with transportation projects in the Transportation Improvement Fund. And more comprehensive or neighborhood or other projects would be within the stormwater fee. Go ahead. These are showing some of our program areas that are within the stormwater program. So we have administration, asset management, cleaning and maintenance. The capital projects predominantly are those projects related to the MS4 PRP that I described earlier, or any other projects that we find in our capital improvement plan and compliance with our phase two permit. Under equipment, I, I will note that you will see some equipment when we get to the level of service that based on input provided, was not carried over to the cost of service. And I'll, I'll describe that when we get there. Go ahead. So, so what is a level of service? So I'm just going to read the first sentence. So the concept of a service level defines how the township will build and provide its stormwater management program into the future. And to do that, you can go ahead, James. There was a, there was an effort to look at what is our current level of service? What are we currently providing as a, as a township, as a public works department? What is the desired level of service? What does it take to get there or a gap analysis? And then we looked at the cost of providing the service currently and the projected cost to provide that in the future. So what this slide is pointing out is some of the elements that came out of the, the, the near end of the phase two study in 2020. Again, an emphasis on a system-wide inventory, knowing what we have. An assessment, what condition is it in? A program to take care of and invest and make repairs in the system. Also, there was discussion in, for a community partnership program, the MS4 program, which I had mentioned. A dedicated crew to provide stormwater services to increase that level of service. A desire to keep the system in general repaired and continue to meet any of our permit mandates. Go ahead, James. So this slide shows us the program elements that are in the level of service. I know it's a busy slide. There are references at the end. And most of this information is, is available by clicking on the reference links or on our stormwater page. But all of these program elements in that narrative form, you can go to the next page, James, define the level of service. So these are elements and a narrative and a checkbox and what year we think they would need to take place to build the level of service for the stormwater system. Go ahead, James. So we have our current level of service. As I mentioned, what we looked at was a table that described the desired level of service. Then there's a gap between the existing and the proposed. So a gap analysis was done and feedback was obtained from the advisory committee. Not always unanimous, but certainly consensus is what was struck. not always unanimous, but certainly consensus is what was strived for. There are interviews with staff, there was a survey that was solicited, and of course, advice from our consultant. All that was used to put together what I'm now going to describe as the cost of service. So an example here is one of the program elements, research and inventory best management practices or basins constructed prior to a certain year so that we have a record of what it is that we're maintaining. How do we do that? So the cost basis, one intern for 480 hours at $15 an hour. So if you go to the next slide and go ahead and advance one more, we're going to come back to this. So that was done for every element in the level of service table. So the level of service was developed, then every program element was looked at and a cost was determined to bring that desired level of service to fruition. In this table, that again is available on our webpage and in the references, is what I refer to and refer to quite often as our cost of service. It takes those program elements and breaks them down and assigns a cost. At the very top of the table are current and existing operational costs that are rolled up in the row that is under the green row with the fiscal years. Then below that are the new operational costs. And together, those two items are expressed in that orange row. So that is the existing operational cost and the proposed, which came out of, again, a level of service and then assigning a cost to that. And then at the very bottom are the capital projects. If we go back a slide, I'm now looking at an excerpt of that to show you the new operational costs that were included in the cost of service. So some of that, some of those items have been completed and some have not. But this is where you'll find the information on the stormwater engineer, the stormwater workers, the interns, the pipe inspection program, the pipelining, and then the capital projects that include the Park Hills Drainage Way project and then the PRP projects. Go ahead, James. So one of the things that I wanted to point out is that we have seen that the cost of some of these elements has increased. For example, the pipe cleaning. So when we initially started doing that with, I will say, some lacks in the environmental component of the work, we were around $3.50 a foot. We're currently, we are closer to $10, $12 a foot with the requirement to capture and manage all of the pump water and the cleaning water from the cleaning operation. In addition, the amount of heavy cleaning influences the cost to do that work because the bid is based on light cleaning and we don't know how much heavy cleaning we have because we don't know what we don't know. So that's done on time and material and it's managed within the budget for that work. You may recall me talking about some of that at a different meeting. And the pipelining has increased in cost. And I can only attribute that to just inflation, supply chain. It's not an operational change that's been made. When the plan was put together, there was a 5% inflation or escalation factor figured into each year. We're seeing some things that are in excess of that. So one of the reasons I bring this to the board along with education is just for, not tonight, but for future consideration as we think about the level of service and the cost of service, how we want to manage the amount of, for example, pipe cleaning or pipelining that we do. We could manage it to the expected timeframe that we anticipated to get it done. We could manage it to the budget in the cost of service table, knowing that it's going to take longer to get it done. Or it could be some other means that's recommended by staff or the board. And I just kind of wanted to wrap this up by giving you a visual. So this next slide shows a neighborhood, Stonebridge. It's a couple of years dated because at least two of those pipe runs have since been lined and they're not shown to be lined here. But this is a visual representation. It shows you the pipe network in one particular neighborhood. If you wanted to, you could also use it as an example of how private and public water are commingled because the system that is in the road right of way is owned by the township and the systems that are not in the road right of way that are backlot or crosslot or in a stormwater basin are privately owned. But what we're able to do through our program of inventorying and cleaning and then follow up with lining is you can take a look at the condition of the pipes, for example, in this one neighborhood. So the dark red are critical or failed infrastructure and the blue are brand new and the green are in good condition. So the yellow and the orange are kind of in that watch zone, so to speak, that need to be monitored closely. For example, King's Court in the bottom right, that pipe is deteriorated beyond being able to be lined. So that's a pipe that in the budget, it was approved for materials only. So we're not contracting that service. But that's a few hundred linear feet of pipe that this year the public works will be digging up to replace. But I just want to give you a visual representation of some of the items that I've been talking about. I think that's my last slide and I can answer questions you may have.
Thanks so much.
Sure.
I think this was good timing to bring this presentation to us and we've already had some discussions. And so I think this is really helpful. Again, this is informational only, we're not taking action tonight. But I expect a lot of questions and comments. So I'll go through all the board and then we'll see if there's any public questions or comments. So I'm going to start over here. Jeremy, sure.
So thank you, Mr. Modricker. I was actually looking through the presentation. You nicely answered two of my questions. Looking at some of these increased costs, it's quite alarming. And I think this was something that this board was sounding the alarm to when we were looking at last year's budget, like where are these numbers coming from? And I still share that concern. One question I would have for you is how is the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act that was passed in 2021 now factored into what we're doing as a municipality when it comes to stormwater management?
In terms of funding, is the question? I don't know that I have the answer to that right now.
Requested any funding from that or looked into it?
Infrastructure and Investment Act, no. No, that may be a funding source that we have received previously, but I don't know. I can check. I don't know what funding is available now for stormwater improvements.
My understanding with, you know, the current administration, there's been a lot of federal funding that has came available and probably more than we'll ever see in our lifetime. And, you know, if it's out there and we don't go after it or ask for it, you know, the money's going to get spent somewhere.
Yeah, I'll certainly look into it.
Definitely curious to see, is there somewhere that Ferguson Township can get a piece of that pie, understanding that we do have infrastructure needs that will need addressed sooner than later?
We can go around, so if you have.
I was going to say, that's all I have for now.
Yeah, my first one's actually related to grants as well, in a way. It would say, you know, what else is out there to supplement this? Because, let's just face it, stormwater is a four-letter word right now. You know, from my constituents and folks that I've talked with. So I'm wondering what that à la carte menu looks in our future conversations about do we extend the project time to meet the budget, et cetera, as you've laid out, Mr. Modricker? What are those options that we have to reduce the burden on the folks within the township? And this isn't about transferring it to something else, you know, let's maybe move it into a different tax situation or a different fee structure, et cetera. But what can we do to really reduce the cost that the taxpayers have right now or those living in the township? That's going to be my focus for the future conversations that we have around this. Just to kind of set the table there, I think it's an important thing to get on the table. With that being said, how was this all kind of managed before there was a fee? Because I think the fee was really the break for a lot of folks where we said, wait, what are we doing now that something has changed, that we have to pay for something differently? Could you maybe just help paint the picture as to what was done beforehand and why? And just for me, I'm curious.
Yeah, absolutely. The first part of your comment, in terms of, you know, where we're spending money and how we can be, you know, more conservative. We do have the Park Hills Drainage Project, which is a large project. Now, we did get a $500,000 grant for that and a $200,000 grant. So certainly, you know, looking at grant opportunities is always something we should be doing. The other piece of the MS4 permit are these stream restoration projects. They are costly and we know that we were able to help produce some of that cost by, I'll use the term, buying credits, you know, in a project that's already completed, the duck pond, as opposed to pursuing the project going up slap, cab and run. So we are still looking at the one that's attributed to Beaver Branch. But what I'd like to look at in the future is what we can use in terms of street sweeping, pipe cleaning, other activities that we can receive credits for sediment reduction or pollutant loads other than the, you know, expensive stream bank lining project. So that's an area that we're going to focus. You know, the other recommendation that I would have is that we focus on our finishing our inventory assessment and cleaning so we know what the condition of all our pipes are. We still, you know, we're not there yet. And when we do our pipelining, focus on the critical and really keep a watch on those ones that are kind of in the yellow and orange area. You know, it's often cost effective and we're all very tempted, well, we're in a geographic area, take care of them while you're here, right? That's a natural inclination. But in terms of focusing on critical infrastructure, the way we would do that is continue that assessment, take care of those that are critical. Of course, we'd like to get to them before they turn into the pipe on King's Court where we can't line it and we do have to dig up the road and get to that point. So your other question was, how did we do things in the past? How were we doing them? If we wind back quite a ways, if we want to wind back 25 years, I would say that we weren't paying a great deal of attention to our infrastructure that we didn't see. I would say we were very focused on our surface infrastructure, on our road network, on things that we could see. And really, you know, our stormwater system was relatively new at the time, right? Developments were being built, as roads were being curbed, storm pipe was being put in. And initially, the standard for that pipe was corrugated metal pipe. For a time, maybe an asphalt coated corrugated metal pipe, but nonetheless corrugated metal pipe. And corrugated metal pipe has a certain useful life. So, you know, as those neighborhoods got built out and as the township was accepting road miles, along with that, we were accepting stormwater systems. We then kind of got to the point where we were noticing some failures in our systems and we started cammering the systems before we accepted them as part of new roads. But still, they were new. Then our standard changed to HDPE, a high density polyethylene. So that pipe doesn't rust, it lives longer, it's more susceptible to crushing and some other holes being poked in it by utility lines, you know, pneumatic, what we call hole hogs, different things like that. But nonetheless, we went to an HDPE pipe. Then somewhere, I'll say maybe 15 years ago, we started paying a little bit more attention to what was underground in that whenever we were going to pave a road, we started to camera and look at what those pipes look like under the road. For example, you know, when Martin Street got paved or when we looked at Westerly Parkway, we really started to develop a program of inspecting the system to see what we have. In some budget years, we realized, jeez, we didn't budget for this underground infrastructure and the cost for the road doubled because it might be, you know, $150 a foot for the roadwork and curb work. And it is very easily that when we got to replace the underground stormwater infrastructure. So we managed it by doing more and more assessments. At a point, we would try to then video assess those projects that we think are going to be paved next year. That's about as far as the program was getting. We didn't have a more comprehensive assessment of the system that really came along with the establishment of the fee. And the way we kept up our storm system is it was what we call the road crew. So when we look at where our road crew spends our time now, even though they're called the road crew, brush collection, leaf collection, roadside mowing, stormwater repairs, we actually spend more time in those four activities than we do maintaining the road, which would be milling, patching, crack sealing, those type of activities. So it was a long answer, but what we've done to manage our system has evolved over time. And we looked at this as the, I guess, the, one of the tools in the toolbox to fund the care for our infrastructure. You know, along with that then came our MS4 program. Now, we've had that for 15 years, but what's relatively new in the last five years is the requirement for the pollutant reduction plan. So that carries a cost. But I talked about how I think we can try to, you know, lessen those impacts in the future the best we can.
Thank you for that. That was absolutely helpful. And again, looking at the pollution reduction plans, et cetera, that's going to be an important aspect going forward. Again, my future conversations, when we really dive into this, are going to be around how do we reduce the cost to the taxpayer, to those residents? So that, again, front and center. Any elimination we can do. I know a lot of folks were blindsided. I always say blindsided or felt blindsided by this a couple of years ago when it really hit. And, you know, how do you deal with that? How do you mitigate it, et cetera? So when we can dive into it, that's all I'll say, you know, for now, tonight's discussion. But just kind of, again, setting the table for future discussion. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. And we can go online. Patty?
Thank you. Thank you. Thanks, Dave, for the presentation. I was going to say, the thing that you had discussed is that I think it's great that we can in the future look at some cost savings just in terms of staff time, et cetera, if we get credit for the street sweeping and the cleaning and that sort of thing for our MS4 permit. So that's amazing. I look forward to that. But my other question is, and I might have asked this before and have just forgotten, but so the information that we find out about stormwater, the pipes, et cetera, did this all get put into TRAZER and does TRAZER help us track this? Or is Or is Tracer just for surface?
So we do use Tracer for work orders. So yes, we will put work orders into Tracer, our asset management system, and we will track the time and the cost, so we know where we're spending our, our time and our money. In, in terms of the geographic assets, yes, we put them in Tracer. However, I will say that we are probably putting a greater reliance on ARC GIS, which is a geographic information system, to keep that system current. So, for example, the, the image that you see on the screen, that would have been pulled from our ARC GIS system. And, and even at that, we are behind in keeping that updated, because I know there's, there's two pipe sections on there, you know, that we did line within the last couple of years, and it's not reflected. So yes, we use Tracer for, for work orders and costs, and we're using GIS to see that visually and to create maps. And it can be imported back into Tracer, but then it becomes a snapshot. So for us to work with it live, I think what I'm learning is the ARC GIS platform is our best resource, and we have that.
Great. And again, thank you so much for the education on that. I really appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Patty. I'm going to go to Omari.
Matt, we hear great questions, answered a lot of things that I am aligned with, and I agree with that. Thank you.
Thanks. Yes, Matt, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm sorry, just a follow-up to, Mr. Modricar, you mentioned some of these stormwater basins, et cetera, were on private property. How does the funding of that, or the repairs of that type of infrastructure come into play with the type of stormwater that is actually in the public right of way?
Sure. Yeah, there's a lot of discussion on that topic during our advisory committee meetings. And the analogy I use is unlike the Water Authority and the Sewer Authority, that when they build out their, their system, they, they own, you know, all of that collection system until it comes to, I'll call it your curb stop, or, you know, your lateral that goes into, into the house. The, the way the stormwater system has been developed in Ferguson Township is that the pipe system that's in, in the road network is owned by the township. Everything else that is installed, whether it be backlot or going to a basin, is owned by a private entity, most commonly, a, an HOA. But we all know there's older neighborhoods that don't have HOAs. So those entities are responsible for maintaining their own infrastructure. Now, we may clean or look at the condition of those, so that we can inform them of the condition, and so that our stormwater can continue to flow, but the maintenance and repair that falls on the, you know, on the private property owner. To address some of those issues, there was consideration for a community partnership program that had some funding set aside, and that was to try to help address some of these issues where there's commingled water, you know, a certain amount private, a certain amount public, and, and how can we address those? But I don't think that's currently in the current budget, but that was part of the discussion about, you know, how, how do we handle some of those issues? But short answer is, whatever's in the public right of way is public, and whatever's on private property is private, with, with maybe some few exceptions.
And I think the use case that I'm concerned about is, for example, if a private entity has one of these stormwater basins, and they're also still paying into the, into the stormwater fee, but they're also now on top of that responsible for maintaining the infrastructure within their private property as well, they have an additional cost associated with that, even though they're already paying in. So that's a use case I think I want to understand a little bit more about, too, as we go forward.
Sure. I can address a little bit about that now, if you'd like.
Please.
Okay. Yeah, so, so, for example, Stonebridge or some other HOAs that, that do have a basin on their property. So they can receive a credit to the stormwater fee of a certain amount, and then they determine if the HOA wants to receive that credit, or if it's to be divided up amongst the property owners. So property owners can get up to a 40% credit, and if someone in Stonebridge, for example, that's in that area that drains to one of the basins, that's getting perhaps a 15% credit, is still eligible to get a 25% credit. So I was, I was talking to someone yesterday who, their HOA gets a 15%, they adopted, an inlet at 20%. So, you know, cumulatively, it's a 35% reduction for them, but 15 goes to the HOA, and 20's reflected on their bill. So that, that was one of the ways to try to address some of that concern.
Great. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
I have a follow-up, ma'am.
Oh, yes, go ahead, Omari.
This stormwater maintenance, is it, what's, what's the lifespan for each linear pipe that we're kind of doing maintenance on? Is it five years? Is it 10 years? Is it forever?
So if I heard you, I think your question is, what's the lifespan for the pipe? Is that the question?
The maintenance that we're doing, sorry.
Okay. So, you know, a corrugated metal pipe, depending on the coating and the soil conditions, could be 20 years, it, it could be 40 years, but it's probably closer to the 25. HDPE, which is the plastic pipe, the high-density polyethylene, you know, published life may be 50 years. Concrete pipe, that we don't use very often, might be published at closer to 75 or 100. And when we do our pipe lining, that adds structural integrity and is, is believed to be in that 50 to 100-year for the service life. So, you know, once pipes are rehabilitated, then, you know, a lot of those major costs you would think would, would be reduced. Pipe cleaning and assessing is probably a program that would, you would think would continue, and depending how often you get to it, and what the upstream drainage area is like, if it's stabilized, you would hope that over the years, you'd see less and less, you know, debris buildup. But probably, a cleaning program would be ongoing and necessary to make sure that your pipes are functioning properly. Did that answer?
Okay. If there's nothing else from the board at this time, I was going to see if there's some public comment or questions on the presentation, and then we can come back to additional board comments and discussion. So if there's any public, yes, come on up to the podium and provide your name and township of residence for the minutes, please.
Bill Keough, I live on Tadpole Road. Several different thoughts and comments for your consideration as you move forward with, with your, your deliberations in regard to this stormwater discussion. There's been a lot of talk recently among the board and, and, you know, some of the public, in terms of economic development for Ferguson Township. And I can tell you with a fair amount of surety that the stormwater fee strategy is not economically, economic development friendly. So regardless of its goal, one of the potential negatives of the current environment is that it's not really economic development friendly for many of the local-owned businesses. I can, I can also say to you that, in one particular case, the stormwater fee is 200% larger than the property taxes for a particular property. So, you know, when you start looking at those kinds of impacts and numbers, we've, we've got some issues here with regard to the fee and the strategy and the way we're implementing it. I guess one way to look at that is to, to look at the percentages of, of allocation. Where is the fee income coming from? And one way to look at that is to look at our zoning districts, to give us an idea of what portion or percentage of fee is coming from this zoning district and this zoning district. I would ask, in terms of this whole economic development kind of question, what is the aggregate total of income from the fee for the industrial, the light industrial, the commercial, and the R4 zoning districts in our township? You know, where, where are we putting the pressure? I'm not saying who deserves the pressure, I'm saying where are we putting the pressure? Then we can decide, based on those percentages, whether that's, I'm hesitant to use the word "fair," but, but for lack of another word, fair or not fair, in terms of trying to understand the impact of this particular strategy. Has any other strategy been explored in any kind of detail, addressing our stormwater initiatives besides the use of the fee? My thought is, and I go back to when we did this origi, when, when it was adopted originally and, and a couple of years before, where we had a lot of discussion about the fee before we enacted the fee. I feel that we need, as a township, to have some choices as to how we address the, the good presentation that Mr. Modricar made. When this all came about, the impression that many of us as citizens had with regard to this strategy was, this was the way we were going to go. And we didn't have any choices presented to the board with regard to, well, if we do it this way, or if we do it this way, or if we do it this way. There was comment from time to time, in fact, one supervisor even made the comment, just plan on tripling your taxes, and that's what you'll have if you don't have the stormwater fee that we're proposing. I saw that, very honestly, as a scare tactic. But I think we need to have some choices with regard to the target of, of dealing with The Citizen Advisory Committee was put together, and, and you guys can all look at who was on it. It was a pretty high-power committee. There were some pretty good resources sitting on that committee to advise the consultant. To my knowledge, they were never allowed to vote on adopting the stormwater fee strategy. I was told by the consultant that that committee, it was not their purpose to approve or disapprove, pass or not pass, onto the supervisors their opinion of the stormwater fee proposal. It was their job to advise the consultant as to how to craft the proposal that was going forward. So don't assume that this advisory committee was part of the consent process to agree to have this particular fee. It was interesting that the ordinance was passed by the board with staff support after several hours of public comment over, what, maybe a six- or eight-month period of time, I believe. Time was set aside in the agendas for discussion of this and so on, and there, there was a fair amount of public comment during that period of time. And there were several individual citizens that made comment, there were several citizen groups that made comment, and with all of those hours of testimony back then, only two citizens commented in favor of the ordinance. And it might be interesting to realize that neither one of those citizens were residents of Ferguson Township. The Court of Common Pleas in the state of Pennsylvania has already made a ruling about stormwater fee program in another municipality, and ruled it to be a tax and not a fee and inappropriate with regard to how it was, how it is being administered. That ruling has been appealed by the township, and that appeal, as far as I know, has still not been taken up by the appellate court. It still, still just sits there. I know that some individuals in the township have talked about, maybe we need to sue Ferguson Township to find out whether this fee is even legal. But then, it puts all of that expense on the part of individual citizens, and to this date, nobody's stepped up. In conclusion, if we agree on a basic level of service, and I think that was, that was the start of Dave's, Dave's presentation, in terms of defining what a level of service is, if we agree on a basic level of service, the issues come down to three things. In what timeframe? At what cost? And what can we afford? Those are the three considerations. And, and I think we need to consider a different strategy than the stormwater fee to address the current, basic level of service needs that we have. I think a new priority probably should be to adopt a strategy that we can afford. I'd also like to suggest that the board reconstitute the original advisory committee to help you revisit. Now that it's been working for three months, or three years, two years, revisit the fee and see if there is another strategy that would be more appropriate to meet the long-term need that isn't going to go away. It's just that this particular strategy, I don't think is in the best interest of Ferguson Township and its residents, and clearly, our business community has taken a big hit. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Appreciate those comments. And if there's anybody else who'd care to make some comments, I'd ask you to come up to the podium and provide your name and your township of residence for the minutes.
My name is Dan Hardner, Lethwaite Hall Road. I hate to fall afew. Jeez. I wanted to go back to your point, and I, I don't know all the board members anymore. On the, the cost of implementing some of these stormwater basins and things like that, if you look at, across the street from us, it's a 35-acre tract, sheets over there, a development, when you look at the land cost, the When you look at the land cost, the engineering cost, the extra, the land movement, the excavation, I'll get it, I'll get it. Excavation costs and the infrastructure, infrastructure cost between all of these detention basins, I would be willing to bet there's millions of dollars tied up in that. In addition to paying all that, now they're going to be paying the tax also. So I think your point is very well taken to look at how this works and how one thing interacts with the other and how it comes together. So. And to Bill's point about the cost on a tax basis, I have an interest in three pieces of property. One is my house, one is a small market building across the street and one is a 35 acre tract of land right down West College Avenue. I just got my township taxes. If I add all the taxes together, the stormwater tax is 60%. 60% of the taxes I pay gives to the stormwater tax. So I don't, I don't think it's a just tax. I think it should be, I personally think it should be removed and redone, but at least refined to a great degree. And I want to, I want to talk about one more thing. I think when I left here at the last meeting, I said there are some other, other terms. And one is workforce housing. And I bring this up because I think it's very important in this township. And, and on the west coast, they're doing what they call ADUs, which are additional dwelling units, which allows somebody to build out, you might, have you seen anything on this? Allows people to, or has anybody seen anything that maybe can speak to it? Good. I think that's something that maybe the planning commission or somebody in this township should be looking at as a way to allow people to be able to, to live in this township that don't make a large amount of money without subsidizing. I mean, it's, it's something I think could probably work if it's worked at and made to work. So, thank you.
Much. I'll just say under the planning commission does, has talked about ADUs in the past and continues to do that. So I appreciate that comment. Okay, any other public comment? Yes, and if you could please come up to the podium and provide us your name and township of residence for the minutes.
My name is Chin Yefodra, I'm a resident Ferguson Township. I'm speaking as a resident, not as a board member. I appreciated Matt acknowledging the challenges with HOAs and COAs in the township regarding the stormwater fee. We get pretty, yeah, pretty hard. We're maintaining our private facility, we're also paying in the township. And where we're at, we can't even seem to get a credit at our HOA. So it's expensive and I didn't really feel when this was implemented, the fee was implemented, that HOAs, COAs, condo type places were really looked at differently than a single family dwelling unit. You got 1,400 square feet and you're paying more per, you know, the unit, was it the PDU? ERU, different. We're paying as much or more as single family homes and this just seems bizarre to me. So as the board is looking at this, I would encourage you to maybe look at condos, apartments, HOAs a little differently than single family dwelling units. Again, we're stuck, our roads are private, we have all this impervious area, but we can't get to our homes any other way. So, and I think I talked to Dave about it too and you explained how your roads were dedicated and so forth. And I mean, it's just the nature of the beast, but it's an expensive proposition. And if there could just be some consideration made toward that, it would be appreciated, I know, by a lot of the associations. And I'm not here in any official capacity, but just as a resident asking you to look at that. Thank you.
Appreciate that, thank you. Okay, other public comment? Not seeing any. So we can go back to the board if there were some additional comments or questions before I try to sum up here. And we could start online, Patty or, or Amari, if you have any additional comments or questions?
Nothing else to add?
Chin, I'm just, for a minute, I'm smoking, I, I live in a, a stormwater basin. And what we do, are, we are budgeting to make in that basin. We'll receive stormwater credits and kind of work through all of those kind of hardships that I would say. But I, you know, I think, I, I just, I empathize with everyone that, that just kind of needs, you know, more information about where this money is going, you know, and Matt put it, you know, very well. And Mr. Madrik's answer to the, you know, helped me paint the picture of the past and the past was we did nothing wrong. And so now everyone's paying and in the present are paying for the sins, the sins of the past, which was nothing. Doing nothing and not keeping eyes on the ball 20, 30 years ago. Or at least understanding that there's some effects in the future and not, it's not that. It's we learned and, and, and you know, we made some, some adjustments towards the forward. So I look forward to kind of finding a, will you not work for him, but, or leave and follow me? Over, thank you.
Thanks, Amari, and we'll go back to the room. Matt, do you have anything else?
My, my closing thoughts are truly just to thank the citizens for coming out tonight and voicing your concerns and your thoughts and to encourage you to keep doing that in the future. Because that is the thing that empowers us to make decisions and hopefully make the right decisions as we do this. So I just want to say sincerely thank you. And let's use this as a jumping off point for a deeper conversation. Now that it has been three years and we've kind of learned some things along the way and we also seen the cost of everything go up, the cost of even buying groceries, all this stuff that we, you know, almost took for granted for so many years, everything costs more now. And with a focus on that in the future, anything we can do to help folks is going to be important. So I have additional thoughts, but I've said enough tonight for now, so thank you.
Okay, Jerry?
Yeah, I, I'd definitely be eager to carry on this conversation. Thank everyone for attending tonight. One, some other notes that I made, I was evaluating when this was passed back in 2021. I do believe there was some concerns on the board with COVID at the time and just the uncertainty. And then like looking how the following year unfolded when everyone got those tax bills. All of a sudden inflation's jumping up to like 8%. And we even had people coming out here tonight that have said, hey, this fee has been a big part of my overall tax bill. So you know, it, it, it was just bad timing to get hit with that extra fee on top of inflation as well as every other expense occurring. And then just to see township costs with pipelining increasing by 171%. Definitely would be eager to dig into this and find solutions that will work for the betterment of economic stability in the township and the, the budgets of the working people that live in the township as well as our cost and how we are allocating your tax dollars to our infrastructure needs.
Thanks very much.
Welcome.
Dave, thanks so much for the presentation.
You're welcome.
That was really helpful and I, I think it provided the board, anyone who is, you know, just stepping into this or may have been here and has, you know, needed a refresher on kind of how we got to this point. So I think that was well done and thank you for including it in the agenda. So we have all these materials in there should anyone need to go back and look at it. So I agree with so many of the comments that were shared here tonight. And you know, what I'm summarizing here, what I've heard was an interest in having a future discussion, looking at what options the board has in evaluating the cost of service and how are we going to manage that given inflation and other, other cost, other cost issues. And then the complexities of it too, I heard a lot of comments about that. I have a lot of notes that we could get into it, our next discussion about a little bit deeper into that. But I think this was a good starting point, a very good level set of understanding for everyone. And so we'll, we'll plan to bring it back and have some further discussions. Again, looking at these options that, you know, just how we, as Dave said, how do we manage this? And so, you know, what, what do we have in front of us that we could, that we could alter? You know, try to make a, a plan with all of our new information, having done this for a few years now. So, all right, if there's nothing else, really, really appreciate the public comment. Thanks so much for sitting through the meeting and until the end, this was our last item. So if there's nothing else on that, we do recommend a motion here to accept the presentation. So we could go ahead and, and do that if someone would care to make that motion.
Mr. Thompson, we move that the board supervisors accept the presentation delivered by the Public Works Director.
Thanks, is there a second?
This is Matt, I'll second.
Any other discussion?
Just thank you so much for bringing this forward. I honestly, even though I was on the board three years ago, I've been waiting for this moment for the last three years and I am pleased to be a part of it.
Thanks, thanks very much for that. Okay, if there's no other discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, say no. All right, thanks. So we will go to communications to the board. If there's anything anyone would care to share, is that Patty's hand? Okay, thank you. Patty, go ahead.
Well, I'm actually using communications to the board because I, I have had this discussion, but I wanted to go back, I'm sorry to do this, to, and I, it's to one of the consent agenda items. And it was the money for Fourth Fest and I 100% support that still. My communications or comment is in any letter that accompanies that check that would go there, I was just wondering if the board would support maybe a suggestion that rather than fireworks, that maybe the Fourth Fest committee look into using drones as fireworks? Because I have, have had some of my neighbors and people talk about the fireworks and how disruptive they are, that the birds and animals, et cetera. And I do know that they, some places have fireworks displays, but they're done by drones. That's my only comment, kind of sort of going back, but using it publicly, communication to the board.
Thanks so much. So we'll talk about that and maybe that's something we could put on the consent agenda or something if we, if we want a, a note on that. But I appreciate that comment, that's interesting. Any other communications?
I had a communication related to the SAC as well as another one from a non-Ferguson Township resident, as it turns out, talking about something that was going on in the township, which is a potential beaver dam that's being built along a stream out in the west end on Marengo. So that was communicated, that was it.
Anything else?
I had a communication regarding personnel, the roads and coral acres, and then one on stormwater ordinance.
Not seeing anything else.
Oh, Amari, just communications on workforce housing, so we'll be bringing that there.
Thank you. All right, so under calendar items, a number of items. The one I'll point out here first is the property tax rent rebate prep event. I think that Senator Langerhold's office is hosting that, that's on March 11th. And the household hazardous waste collection event on April 26th and 27th. If there is nothing else, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And I'll second and we're adjourned. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Thanks.